has prepared some materials going to walk us through our rules and procedure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, so we figured, you know, what's the best way to start this year off? Let's do a refresher on our rules of procedure. These were completely overhauled in 2018, but they have been reviewed yearly by this board, and they were last reviewed in February 2022. So we're going to talk through them, but this is an opportunity to comment on any changes you might have, any questions you might have. These are your rules. This is not statutory. This is a fluid document that you can change. So we'll go through that. You know, there are some references to statutes, and obviously, we can't change those parts. But, you know, overall, this is your document. So I have a copy for everyone that you can keep close to you, keep by your bedside table.
I do have a hard time sleeping, so that'll help. No, Randall will not be joining us tonight, as well as Lynn.
So the rules start off with setting forth your regular meetings. When we meet, when we do our work sessions, and I think that's pretty standard language. You know, seven o'clock, we start our work sessions. Seven thirty, we start our meetings. We meet the second Tuesday of every month, unless otherwise noted.
I will note that the workshops are designed because, as members of a board, we do have a requirement by, it's the county, I believe, for learning?
Yes, that's correct. So it's actually under general city law. Requires that you do four hours of training every year. The city can change that requirement, but it has not, so four hours is the time period. So that's why we do these work sessions. They count towards those training hours, and Amanda keeps track, so she knows how many trainings, how much, how many hours each of you have. But that does not exclude you from attending other training programs. If Duchess County does a train, does a session, it doesn't even have to be exactly about, you know, planning boards. It could be just planning issues, or a planning discussion, or something, you know, about zoning. That can also count towards your training. So if you ever, on your own, attend one of these sessions, feel free to let us know, and we can put it towards your hours. If you're not sure if it could count, you can ask Jenner, myself, and we can, you know, tell you, we can talk to the mayor, we can talk to Chris, the city administrator. And so you're not limited to just the training here. In fact, we encourage you to seek training elsewhere, if you're able to. And there's a lot of good programs held everywhere. Especially now, post-COVID, a lot of things are virtual, so.
The Pace Land Use Law Center offers some really great programs.
Yeah, they do an annual meeting. I think they just had theirs in December, but every December, they do a big program that counts towards training hours. And then, kind of dispersed throughout the year, they might do a couple sessions here and there. And we'll try and keep you more appraised of those. We try and send emails when we get that information, but we can pay more attention to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that brings us to membership expectations. So obviously, you're expected to do your four hours of training, just like we talked about. You're, you know, required to attend these meetings. If you have to be absent, please let us know, let the chairman know, so we can make sure that we have a quorum.
The group here is usually very good about enough notice on, we've had very few, but some where we were worried about whether we'd make a quorum. Usually Randall shows up very last minute, so. But yeah, it's always good to know well in advance if you, and again, everybody here is very good about that. If you feel you're not able to attend.
And it's important, because in order to take any action, you have to have a quorum present in person. So a quorum of this board would be five, you have to have at least, I was gonna say five, at least four members of the seven-member board to take any action. So if we don't have a quorum, you can't do anything. Otherwise, you'd be in violation of the open meetings law.
And then, when we are only just a quorum, let's talk a little bit about how we want to make sure that applicants who might see action from us on their applications should be aware of the fact that there is a chance, with only just four of us, that they don't have the benefit of a full board and a full vote.
Yeah, so just to add to that point, that's a great, that's great, John, that you brought that up. In order to approve any resolution, that you must have at least four yes votes. And it's votes of the entire board. So even though there's four members, it's not a majority of the four, right? It's not three out of the four. It's always at least four. Otherwise, the action does not move forward. That's why it's so critical that, you know, everyone's here, and that you let the applicants know if you're only going to have four or five members, because they might want to hold over to the next meeting, when they'll have the opportunity to present to the entire board, in case they might get some no votes. So, and that's, you know, generally a courtesy to let them know, so that they can make that decision early, early on. All right, part of your other jobs are obviously to make sure that you're familiar with the materials. It's not great if you show up to a meeting and you haven't looked at the application. It's really hard to render a responsible decision if you haven't looked at anything, or to ask applicable questions. So always make sure that you're aware of what's on the agenda, what the materials are, what the, what has been submitted. We talked about the training. Also, you know, when you come on board, make sure you're familiar with the code, the relevant provisions of the city code, which are always available online. I think, at this point, nobody is brand-new to the board, except for David, but I think you have a good idea of what you need to know, what chapters are most relevant to your review requirements. And I know David from the ZBA. He knows, he knows his chapters.
We'll make, we'll make formal introductions when we start the meeting. Yes, we're very glad for David joining us.
Okay, so then we have the chairperson responsibilities. Obviously, they're going to preside over the meetings. They're responsible for signing your final plats, your site plans, and permit approvals. Any other instruments that have to be signed by the planning board are going to be signed by the chairman. And there might be other duties from time to time that the chairman has to be responsible for. He does, in addition to these meetings, he has to attend pre-conference calls, where we talk about the applications, and, you know, any other special calls. So the chair, the chairperson does more than just be here, but, you know, kind of has to be prepared to lead these meetings and lead the discussion on the application. So there's more that comes with that, so. Thank you, John, for being chair. That's great. All right, so let's talk about some additional guidelines for planning board members. You should be recognized by the presiding officer before speaking and/or making a motion. A member shall address the chair and shall wait to be recognized. These rules, they might sound silly, but they help create an orderly meeting. Nothing's worse than a disorderly meeting. I mean, that's, it's not efficient, it's confusing, and it doesn't create a clean record. So these rules really help the efficiency of a meeting, and help ensure that we are going to document everything that is happening appropriately, and we'll have those records forever. Also makes it easier for Amanda to take notes as well, and then produce those notes in the minutes, so. Conflict of interest. It's important that you're aware of whether or not you have a conflict of interest with an app, with an application. A member is prevented from participating in a matter if there's a conflict of interest, and you have to immediately notify, you know, the chair, the planning board secretary, and Jennifer Gray, that you, even if you're not sure, if you think that there's a conflict, if, if you have some sort of relationship with the applicant, and you're like, ooh, does that create a conflict? Reach out to Jennifer or myself, and we can talk you through about whether or not an actual conflict exists. Because if you participate on an application where a conflict does exist, then you could be jeopardizing that decision and make it vulnerable to challenge. So it's very important, and sometimes it's just a matter of disclosing your relationship and saying that I can rent, I can review this application impartially and render a fair decision. You don't necessarily have to recuse yourself, so there's, I guess there's three options at the end of the day. You know, one, no conflict at all, you don't have to say anything. Two, you have a relationship, you might want to disclose that relationship and confirm that you can look at it impartially. Or three, you have to recuse yourself if there is actually a conflict. And that would require you to step away from the table, and, you know, to actually step out of the room would be ideal, or sit in the, sit in the back. So, you know, it's just important to be aware of those requirements, and never hesitate to talk to Jennifer or myself, you know. We don't, there's no judgment on the conflict, it just happens. This is a small city. Non-disclosure of confidential information. So this is critical. There is an exchange of information, sometimes attorney-client privileged communications. You should not release anything to the public. These are confidential pieces that remain with the planning board. That's critical for foil reasons. Once you release it to the public, then that information can then be released to everybody. It loses its protections. So make sure that you're using your City of Beacon email accounts, and make sure that you're not releasing any information. If you receive, this is kind of not exactly with confidential information, but if you receive an email related to a planning board matter, and that email goes to your personal account, we recommend forwarding it to your City of Beacon email account and responding from your Beacon email account. That way, because if, again, if there's a foil request, that would be, that would put your personal email account subject to review. And you don't want to do that, that's your personal account. So make sure that your planning board issues are always with your City of Beacon email account, and that you're not releasing any private or confidential information. Any memos that come out, if they're coming from our office, they'll say, you know, typically say privileged and confidential. If you're not sure, you could, you should always ask. Anything that's posted on the website, obviously, that's public, but, you know, don't forward any emails, don't forward any memos. Otherwise, you'll ruin confidentiality, which could create additional disclosures in the future. So be very careful with confidential information. All right, meetings. So I mentioned the open meetings law. The planning board is a public body. You are subject to the provisions of the open, open meetings law. That's Article VII of the Public Officers' Law. This requires, requires meeting minutes to be taken. It requires that you have a quorum to take any action. It requires that the quorum be present in person. You could attend virtually. I don't think the planning board typically does that nowadays, right?
No, no.
Right, so your quorum has to be in person, you know, and all your meetings are open to the public, except for executive sessions. An executive session are limited reasons that you can step away from the public and talk about either personal information, or attorney-client advice, things of that nature.
Another important component to this is members discussing aspects of applications outside of the meeting setting. Highly discouraged.
Highly discouraged.
Right. We can certainly talk with public about the aspects of our procedure, what the planning board does, how it relates to, you know, planning in general, but not specifics of active applications, as they're being reviewed by us individually, with either others or the applicant themselves.
Right, that would be a violation of the open meetings law. In fact, anytime you, a majority of the board is together, you know, and that might be, again, small city, might be all at the same restaurant, or go to the same Christmas party, that's okay. Do not talk about city business, specifically planning board matters. That would be a violation of the open meetings law. And every meeting has to be noted, properly noticed, and open to the public. So again, keep discussions to, you know, this room during meeting time. That also goes for email correspondence. You can't have, start a discussion exchange via email. That's also a violation of the open meetings law. So you, you know, if you have a question, and you reply all, asking the question, and, you know, Kevin has an answer, Kevin should not be replying all, you know, that needs to be saved for an open meetings discussion. So refrain from correspondence via email as a group. Again, though, that's not to say, do never hesitate to email any of, you know, anyone in our office, or any of the consultants. That's why we're here for you, for you. Cool, so the planning board holds public hearings in addition to those, so you can hold public hearings in addition to those required by law, right? Site plan requires public hearings, special use permit requires public hearings. Our seeker public hearings are not required by law, but the planning board has a tradition of holding seeker public hearings if they feel it's appropriate. That's like an extra public hearing, and you can do that under your rules. Site visits can also be conducted by the planning board as a group, or separately by individuals. The determination of whether a group site visit will be performed should be made at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting. So again, this does not happen via email, where we're all like, okay, cool, everybody, let's go on Wednesday at nine o'clock. That decision should be made in the public, in the public meeting. Site visits are limited to touring and obtaining factual information pertaining to the site and application without substantive discussion. So you don't, you know how we talked about, anytime a majority gets together, and you start talking about an application, you're violating the open meetings law. But there is an exception for site visits, where you're not having substantive discussions, and you're talking about your observations. That's okay. And those do not need to be noticed, and the public's not allowed to participate in those. What's essential, though, is that when you come back here, you reiterate your observations and talk about what you saw, and then have the substantive discussion. So site visits are okay. Again, the meeting should be noted during a public meeting, and no substantive discussion should happen while you're on site. So, you know, and we get a lot of questions about that as well. Proceeding. So the chair presides over all the meetings, like we said, and in the chair's absence, the acting chair shall preside at the meetings. Do we know who the acting chair is?
Randall.
Randall, okay, good to know. In the event the mayor has failed to appoint the acting chair, or where such member is absent from the chair, the meeting shall select another board member. So if you couldn't attend, and Randall couldn't attend, then you can designate someone else.
At this point, we don't have a second, so we'll sort of take that up, it may be a good idea.
Yeah. Let's see, so under New York state law, noticing a public hearing is not required after the initial public hearing is held and continued at a specified date. So we all know that prior to a public hearing, you have to do your mailings, and you have to post your sign. Additional notice is not required once that public meeting, public hearing happens. You can adjourn it. We recommend always adjourning it to a date certain. That way, if someone's interested in the application, they'll know that they can attend, you know, the next meeting, or whenever it may be.
There have been instances, in fact, one recently, where we've noticed a public hearing, that public hearing hasn't taken place. Couple of months have gone by, we've re-noticed for that reason.
Right, absolutely, because you want to, you just want to be fair to the public, and the purpose of notice is to make sure they know when their opportunity is going to happen, for them to, to speak on the application. So if it, a long time has gone past, or it's not clear when that public hearing was going to take place, then re-noticing would be appropriate in that case. And always the signage is, is continuously updated, so.
And we got bigger and better signs a year ago, so.
Yeah. We're moving up in the world. So before the public comment, a formal presentation by the applicant or their representative should take place. That's going to allow them to introduce the application, or to provide updates, both for this board, and then for the public, so they know, you know, what's going on. The chair should identify all correspondence pertaining to the application previously received from the general public, and enter such correspondence in the record. Again, it's important to enter it into the record, because that's what the, that's what the history of, of this matter. And if, if it ever goes to an Article 78, or any other types of challenges or questions, the record is essential to the board's determination. You should not make any conclusions that aren't supported by what's in the record, so.
Usually, written submissions go directly to the city. Those are then automatically entered into the record, right? Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I also forgot to scroll. My apologies. Anyone in the public, these rules are posted on the planning board page, so while I failed to scroll, they are available for all to see. I went too far. But yes, if you receive any comments, though, you should always forward them to Amanda, so that they do get in the record, just in case they weren't sent to her.
Yeah, and there, there are some instances, most of this is now happening electronically, but some instances where we'll receive written correspondence at the meeting, so the procedure of recognizing it, entering it, and sharing it with clerk is important.
Exactly. So no action shall be taken upon an application that is subject to a public hearing until such time as the public hearing has been closed. I think everybody, at this point, knows you can't approve a project until the public hearing is, is done, or until, really, the first step, seeker complete, public hearing, then you can make a decision. So, you know, it's just important to be aware of the steps. Then we have some motions. I'll move past that, I think everybody's got that. Voting. A majority of the whole membership of the planning board, including vacancies, abstentions, and any members disqualified, shall constitute a quorum. Therefore, a quorum of the seven-member board is four members. We talked about that a bunch. A quorum shall be necessary to take any formal action and to exercise any power. No member shall withdraw from a meeting of the planning board without permission from the chair. The chair of the planning board shall have the right to act on matters before the board as other members, including the right to make, make and second motions. The ayes and nays of all board member votes shall be recorded in the minutes. Disqualification. Each member of the planning board shall vote on all questions before the board, unless required to abstain in accordance with any applicable law, regulation, or other valid reason. For example, our conflict of interest reason. I mean, that would be the main reason you, you might step away. Or abstain if you feel uncomfortable rendering a vote after everything you've heard, and don't want to say aye or nay. A membership abstaining shall cite the reason for their abstention. Members shall be automatically disqualified based upon a business interest or financial interest, like we talked about before.
Just real quick, on abstentions, you mentioned the member abstaining shall cite the reason. I feel it's always good practice to, when voting nay, to share your reasons for that as well, for the record.
No, that's a, that's a fair, a fair request. So conduct of speakers. I know that sometimes the planning board meetings have a lot of public hearings on your agendas, and they can go very late, and so it's important, you know, that we have effective, efficient meetings. So that's making sure that the board is acting accordingly, and also understanding how speakers are requested to conduct themselves. So all persons speaking before the planning board are required to conform to the following standards of conduct. And I'll make sure I get to this page. Here we go. Speakers must step up to the podium to address the planning board. Before addressing the planning board, a speaker must give their name, address, and organization for the record. Speakers shall address all members of the planning board, and shall avoid speaking at any other, at any one member directly, or to the applicant, or to the general public presentation at the meeting. It's not meant to be a back-and-forth discussion. The speakers are meant to come to the podium and express their questions, their concerns, their comments, and then sit back down, and the board can discuss. You can direct the applicant to answer, but they would be answering to you, not facing any member of the public. It's not a Q and A, it's not a fluid discussion.
Yeah, there are many times when public share their observations, comments, but also have questions, and we usually like to gather those questions.
Right.
And, you know, give the applicant the benefit of responding to them if they so desire, so.
And typically, the applicant's representatives are going to be sitting in the audience, taking notes, writing them down, and then they can be invited back up to answer all the questions at once. A speaker's individual time to speak at a public hearing may not exceed five minutes. The chair may reduce such time to no less than three minutes if the chair or the planning board determines that an additional time limitation is appropriate due to the number of items on the agenda, or the number of people present who wish to speak. Speakers shall observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Any statements, comments, or remarks made by a speaker, one, shall not concern the motives of a member of the planning board, and two, shall not constitute a personal and/or political attack or criticism of any member of the planning board, any officer of the city, any consultant of the city, any employee of the city, or any other member of the public. The audience shall be respectful of all speakers, and shall refrain from comments and gestures, such as clapping, cheering, booing. I got snapping once.
Snapping?
Yeah. That's like a quieter alternative, but still not okay. Private discussions, cell phone use, and otherwise interfering with the meeting is not permitted. You know, again, this is, we're conducting public business, we want to conduct it efficiently and openly, so we need everyone to act appropriately. Any speaker who fails to conform their conduct to the rules provided herein shall be directed by the chair to cease speaking and yield the floor. The applicant and the applicant's representative shall not be bound to the time limit set forth herein, but shall be allowed to speak for such time as permitted at the sole discretion of the chair. The chair shall make all speakers aware of these guidelines for public comment. Copies of the guidelines for public comment shall be made available to the audience at the meeting, along with a copy of the agenda. These documents, and the agenda, and all the application materials are all posted online and easily accept, easily accessible. That word was very difficult for me. Interested parties or their representatives not in attendance may address the planning board by written submission prior to the close of the public hearing. Debate or discussion between audience members and the speaker having the floor shall not be permitted. And then debate or discussion with the speaker on part of a member of the planning board, city attorney, city consultant, a guest, or any other city employee in the audience who has information pertinent to the discussion, shall not be permitted, except in the chair's discretion. The planning board may advise and make recommendations to the city council relating to any subject matter over which the planning board has jurisdiction, including proposed legislation. This comes up a lot, if the city council is contemplating, you know, a zoning change, or trying to think of one scenic overlay district, or, you know, designating scenic sites, or I think we did historic properties. You know, you are free to, as a group, discuss this legislative action, or discuss changes that you might think might be appropriate, and make recommendations to the city council. But again, that's a public discussion, you can add it as a miscellaneous item to your agenda, and you're free to have those discussions. You're also allowed to make investigations, maps, reports, and recommendations pertaining to planning and development issues, including involving the comprehensive plan, use of municipal land, capital budgets, or other matters related to those areas. Planning board members shall refrain from initiating or engaging in ex parte communication concerning any application or matter pending or likely to be pending before the board with applicants and their representatives, potential applicants, and members of the public. I think it's important to note that it's, it's current applications, but it's also the ones that you are aware are coming. You know, whether the city council mentioned that they're coming before you, or, you know, it's kind of common knowledge that a developer has bought a property, and they'll be coming. Those conversations should also not, not take place. You're members of the planning board, you're here to, you're here to have those discussions.
Could you just elaborate with the Latin means?
Oh, ex parte, it means communications outside the planning board. You shouldn't be talking to your City of Beacon neighbor and giving them the lowdown of what's going on on these applications. I think that also goes back to violating the confidentiality that we have, or the attorney-client privilege of some of the communications, before they might be public. Or answering, you know, your neighbor's question, you say, come to the planning board, we'll talk about it there. Or I'll, or I'll make a note of your question, and I'll talk about it in public. So that ex parte means, so outside of the planning board. And let's, recordings of proceedings. Again, it's required under the open meetings law that you have your, your meeting minutes. Every meeting of the planning board is recorded, it's posted on the website, so we're all, you know, famous. If anybody wants to see those videos, they are up from years back. And then, let's see, we have the official record of the meetings, are going to be the minutes prepared by the planning board secretary, but we also have, like I said, again, these recordings that are kept, and these can be part of the official record as well. The meeting recordings are retained as part of the city's retention schedule, so they're retained for several years, I believe it's five years. So they're not going anywhere anytime soon. And if it's a big project, then they're actually required to be maintained indefinitely. If they're believed to have some historical significance, or might come up, and that can be designated at the discretion of the city, how long it'll be retained for. And those are your rules. I know we went through them kind of fast.
You read on time, Drew.
You know, I tried, I tried, John. If you go back and you're reading these again, and you have any questions, again, always feel free to email myself, or Jen. If you have any revisions, make sure you bring them back next month. Um, if you have any revisions, make sure you bring them back next month and you can, you know, make a suggestion to amend the rules. And you can amend these at any time throughout the year, so keep, keep this close. It's online, but you can, I should have like laminated or something, just something permanent.
We, we all have laminated copies already. Yeah, this is great. Really great, uh, way to start the, uh, new year. So thank you, Drew.
Oh, you're very welcome. My pleasure.
Uh, and I have to say, for, for the most part, these, uh, rules and procedure have been working very well for us. So, but again, if there's any, uh, thoughts or ideas, uh, that the board might have and want to bring, let's talk about them next month.